Hi, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of August 13, 2014. Tonight, in attendance, we have Matilda Evangelista, Bob Watts, myself, I'm Harry Lockettilla. Howard Snyder is the Town Planner, and being that it is now 7:12, I'm going to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda are the minutes for June 25th of 2014.
And make a motion to accept the minutes of June 25th.
Second?
The motions have been made and seconded to accept the minutes of June 25th, 2014. Discussion. What do we have? Anything that stands out?
Not for me.
I thought they were pretty, uh, pretty good. I thought there was one thing. Oh, okay, go ahead.
That's all. On number 778, you have 65, and I think you meant 6%.
Where are we? Seven. Seven. Seventy-eight. Miss man, because we are not going to sell just lots we can't afford. What number again?
Seven, seven, eight.
Seven, seventy-eight. Okay. Going to happen?
Yeah.
It wasn't a shift up.
Yeah.
How is that going to happen if you're selling lots and all you do is a 65?
On what?
On the lot. You know, there was 65,000 on it? No.
It's a king, you know.
I think you were looking.
The five is really the percentage sign.
Oh, okay, 6% on the lot. Good catch.
That's it.
Fixed up?
Yep.
Beautiful. Anything else, though?
Yeah, that's about it. That's it. You already added the corrections from the previous.
There was only one thing that I think I remember seeing in them. These were the ones where we appointed you.
These are the ones we discussed but never approved.
Okay. And we appointed Bob at some point?
Yeah.
To Merrimack Valley Planning Commission?
As the alternate.
As the alternate? The vote on that.
It was a recommendation to the Selectmen, the Selectmen are making an appointment on Monday.
Right, can we? Can we? Where is that? Can somebody find that for me? Oh, here we go. Um, nope. I should have marked it.
This period is happy.
Where'd you find it? What's the numbers?
Thirteen of 21.
Thirteen of 21. Thirteen or 21. Um, check that out. I think, I think, um, and it's a roll call vote.
It's been corrected because it was Watts abstaining and Howard saying yes.
Okay, so we're going to swap. Mr. Howard said yes, and Bob, you abstained because it was a relation to you. Right? And that's been squared up?
Yep.
Okay, great. That was the only thing I saw. We good with that? Yep?
Yeah.
All set. I'm going to call the question. The, uh, the motion was to approve the minutes of June 25th, 2014. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries three to zero.
Okay.
Okay, cool. We'll go right into correspondence. If you'd be so kind, want to walk us through that.
The first one, Town of Georgetown Building Inspector issued, um, a letter to 64 through San Diego or East Main Street. There was a complaint about the lights being unshielded, and there's light traffic onto 133. So that's notice to the property owner to rectify, and he has.
Okay. And it's been?
The lights are currently off until they replace the fixtures with ones that are shielded.
Okay. How does that all happen? Is that a site plan, or how did they get installed? Was that? Oh, was this Dunkin' Donuts? Wasn't this under, um?
It was under the.
Zoning board or something? Zoning board did a something for this?
I don't know if it was part of the decision or not. I thought the zoning board was still hearing the changes going on. But this was something that the applicant just may have gone out and installed some new fixtures underneath.
Okay.
Has he installed the new ones yet?
As far as I know, he hasn't installed the new ones yet.
Shut them off.
He just shut them off.
Shut them off.
All right.
So, um.
But then the other one of note is, um, the town of Newberry has a special permit for solar installation.
Back up one second. Could you, could you, like, what happens here? I mean, does the building inspector contact us, or where do we go from here? With respect to, what is it, 64, 74, East Main?
He went out there because there was a complaint issue to his office, and so he was just enforcing.
Right. And this is just an FYI to us. There's no action we need to take here?
No action.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. I thought maybe we were going to be looking at the site plan approval or something. Did, did, did the special, what was that, a special permit before the CBA?
I haven't received notice that I recall that they've issued one.
It says here that it was.
It was?
And it was modified in 2002, right there in the second paragraph explains.
Okay. Must have missed something there. New fixtures in violation of the 97 special permit for an extension of a pre-existing lawful non-conforming use and or structure and or variance along a restaurant, as well as 2002 modification of the, okay, so we're not mentioning what would be a 2013 or 14 decision?
Right.
So, take it that hasn't occurred.
I don't recall it having occurred. I think they keep changing their application or modifying it, or still in review with the zoning board.
Okay, so it's still in permitting. Sorry, please.
No, that's all right.
Newbury, solar array?
Uh, Town of Newberry has a special permit for solar installation, and there's also a notice of an informal workshop regarding that solar installation. So I'm going to be getting in touch with the planner over in Newberry and see how that process evolves.
Great.
Because I have a feeling that eventually something will be coming to Georgetown.
Well, hopefully this year we'll be able to bring in the, the solar bylaw.
Get a, maybe, uh, maybe we'll. Energy generation of a ground-mounted.
Something.
Facility, yeah.
Oh, it'd be nice to have the bylaw anyway. Yeah, that's, uh, that's on the list for this fall, right? Hopefully.
Be for the spring. I don't know if we'll have the time for that.
Maybe not the wish, maybe it's on the wish list for, at some point, right?
Special town.
Twenty fifteen.
Annual town meeting.
Twenty fifteen, maybe. Okay. Yeah, let us know how that works out, please. That'd be nice. And, uh, what was the Boxer one? Something from Boxer? Special permit?
Yeah, we're, we're.
That wasn't anything of a, pretty far away from our borders, right?
Special permit to extend a building to accommodate an addition for a handicap bathroom, so, and I think it was important.
That's just an FYI from them, right?
Just a cursory notice.
Yep. Okay, moving right along. Go to, um, the vouchers.
Two vouchers tonight. Uh, one to pay our annual assessment to Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. Uh, they're the regional planning agency, and there's an assessment given to each municipality that is part of that planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
That is funded by the town. It's carried under our line items, but it's not actually in the planning board budget.
Right.
So, what this board discussed for an annual budget, this doesn't come out.
Doesn't come out of that. Yeah. This is their, uh, and this is an annual assessment.
Annual assessment.
That all towns.
Every town that's part of that planning, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Because they are the regional planning authority, right?
Which is unique to Massachusetts.
Right. Can you give us any clue as to what the, um, what kind of algorithm they use to determine how much we're assessed?
No idea.
Is it, is it based on population?
Don't know. But I can ask.
Good question. Good with that, Tilly?
Yeah.
And, um, what's that other one? It's the advertisement for your, um, for your administrative.
Assistant position.
Great. That one, that one.
I see 52 applications.
Fifty-two, wow.
Excellent.
So.
How's that moving forward?
We should get something.
Are you hungry?
You ready?
I'm starting to get through it.
You working through that?
Yeah.
Great. You're going to work with the town administrator for that?
Yeah, they're the ones that collected it, and they've ordered on the first round. So I just wanted to inform the board of, of the number of applications.
That's great.
Everything's been advertised. Um, it's been advertised downstairs, and I talked to the administrator's office about posting on the website. And apparently it's taken a little bit of coding change because she wants to add that as well as the other, um, positions that can be advertised with the town. But there's something about exceeding a certain amount of spaces in a, in a column.
Oh, wow.
So now something needs to be shifted, so.
What, um, when does that, um, period close, so to speak, for?
Until someone's been hired.
Excellent. Okay, great.
Advertise until filled.
I, I was just wondering if you had a target date? I don't know what the entire process is. Oh, of course. Tomorrow. What time is it now? Uh, but I mean, in realistic terms.
Interviews by the end of August, certainly, and then try to have something selected in the first two or three weeks of September.
Great, great. Does someone want? Is that good, Tilly?
Yeah.
Someone want to give me a motion, um, for $3,092.79?
So moved.
Motion to pay the, the vouchers $3,000, $3,092.79. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it? Motion carries unanimously three to zero. Great. And that's that. Moving right along. Those are done, and we start with, if everybody's good with that, um, the only other thing I'd really like to jump on right now is the old business, if I may. No one would mind. Does that work out for you, Howard, or am I messing up the paperwork there?
No.
Um, Merrimack Valley, the MIMAP scope of work is, uh, is in. Um, now we know exactly what the whole MIMAP contract is, and, um... Great. Two sixes there. We'll square those up. Howard, do we actually have that contract, or, um, do we, what would we do? We wouldn't actually have to per se sign it? We could authorize you to sign it as the, as the town planner, right?
Right. Town of Georgetown, signature of authorized representative, so.
Right. Uh, someone want to give me a motion?
Planning board's paying for it, you can authorize me to sign it, and I'll send it on tomorrow.
Yep. Now we have the scope of work. All looks pretty good. Want to get that back? Um, any comments about it, or?
No, it seems fine.
Looks pretty much the standard.
Are you satisfied with it? You're working mostly with it.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to be clear on it, that's all. I know I delayed it, and, uh...
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure all the paperwork was.
Right.
All attached.
Out rising tonight, the lights can be turned on tomorrow.
They can turn on the MIMAP tomorrow. It's going to be turned on. I'll accept the motion if someone would like to make it to authorize Howard to, um, what's that? Activate the MIMAP for.
Sign the contract for fiscal year 2015.
Fifty.
So moved.
Motion is made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion, anymore? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries two to zero unanimously. So you can sign that up, and Girard will be happy.
Yes. A bit less fustered.
And, um, I think now would probably be a good time to jump on to the A and Rs.
Right.
Forgive me, everyone, for hopping up, hopping, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, before we get into everything, that that didn't get forgotten. That's, uh, something that's used in the office for municipal planning. Um, let's go for it. Form A, 24 Summer Street, and, um, where are we? Do we have applicant? Come, come right up, sir, please, if you would. Um, give us the benefit of, um, please introducing yourself.
I'm Chris Conway, 24 Summer Street. Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
And you seem to have an A and R here?
I do.
Let's tell us a little about it, if you would, please.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so I currently own, uh, the property at 24 Summer Street, have lived there for approximately nine years. And there's a brook that actually separates my property from, I believe it's 12 Summer Street, which is to the left of the, the plan there. Um, brook's naturally occurring, you know, when we first bought the, the home, we, we assumed that we had owned to the center line of the brook. It's actually what the real estate agent had told us. And then, yeah, and then after, after a few months, um, my neighbor had come over and just said, you know, just so you know, this piece of land is actually ours. It's, it's approximately 40 feet or so on the, on the, on the front. Never have had any issues or anything with them. It's just a, a small area, wooded area, that we just sort of dump leaves and grass clippings in. So for the past nine years, it's been great, and, uh, well, you know, it's, it's just a...
But you enjoy the chipmunks and all of the...
We enjoy the flowers.
Don't put grass clippings in brooks.
No, no, not in the brook. No, not in the brook, in the land, sorry. So, um, uh, my neighbors are actually leaving, uh, they're retiring, they're moving to Florida, and so I thought it was a good opportunity to sort of square off our lot and actually bring it to the center line of the brook. Um, and so I had approached them and asked them if they would ever be interested in parting with a piece of land. They said they had, you know, no issue with that at all, and sort of a useless piece of land for them anyways, so, uh, we were able to work out a deal, and, and so that's where I am now. I had an engineer come out and, and survey the property, survey that small triangular piece of land, and now we're just trying to incorporate it into our, into our property.
Your frontage is on Summer Street?
It is, yes. Yeah, if you, if you see the, uh, I don't know if I can, I can't really point to it. I don't have a laser or anything.
This is your lot?
That's my lot there, that's my home.
And you have frontage on Juniper?
Yeah, we live on the corner, right on the corner of Juniper and Summer. So as you come off of Juniper and you're going down Summer Street approaching the, uh, the Penbrook, um, the little bridge in the row there, that's the, the piece of property we're looking for.
Zoom that at all, Howard, or is the quality not?
I have a, I actually have a plan, if you guys want to look at that as well.
I think that's the, what are you having there?
The brook is over here, not where you're.
Oh, whiz. We don't have the little lasers out today, but...
Yeah, there it is. The brook is right there.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly, exactly.
I think this is the property that you're talking about.
That's correct, yeah, that, that triangular piece that is, it's hashed. Um, so this, this piece of property would now take and bring our property line to the center line of the brook, is the way that it's been drafted up by the engineer.
Okay. Any idea if at one time the center of the, center line of the brook was that property line as it exists now?
You know, I don't know 100%. I mean, the registry, it's an old piece of property. I think the home was, uh, from 1804, and I, what I believe happened, I think 12 Summer Street used to be, um, a piece of land that had some livestock, you know, a long time ago. So I think what they wanted to do is they wanted to retain the brook, you know, for watering purposes. So when they split all of the lots, most of the lots on Juniper Lane and actually on North Street as well, all used to be long to 12 Summer Street, so.
Really?
I think that probably had something to do with it. It's kind of odd that they would want to keep, you know, 30 or 40 feet on the opposite side of the brook. You know, it doesn't really make a lot of sense.
I couldn't figure it out either.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of strange.
So now you'll be able to water your livestock, right?
Exactly, yeah. My large bull mastiff and boxer, yeah. They need a lot of water.
You got water for property.
Exactly.
Town for the taxes.
That's true, that's a good point. Yeah, exactly, good point.
There you go. Your taxes are going up, buddy.
I know, I know.
You gotta get it.
Well, as soon as it gets to the assessor's office.
Sure you want to do that.
For 1,800 square feet, you're gone.
It's funny, it's such a small little piece of land, it's about .04 acres, you know, it's really a meaningless piece of land to...
It's very thickly vegetated.
It is.
I could not see the water at all, or, or look down from the car.
No, it really is, it's heavily wooded and...
Loaded with trees, and...
It's actually a deer path, if you will. I mean, most of the deer follow Penbrook, and they come down, and you kind of see them migrating down there, so we're not looking to disturb anything, we're just looking at...
I hope not, because you're going to need a conservation to look at it if you, if you do something there.
We have no intentions, other than just sort of squaring off our lot.
No tree stands, Chris, you're too close to how.
No, I don't hunt. You know, I don't hunt, so I'm not a hunter.
Okay.
No.
Most people can't recognize a tree, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Tilly, any comments?
No, I don't, nothing.
Makes sense.
I don't see any reason for not doing it, yeah.
Appropriate frontage. Um, seems like 12 Summer Street is certainly not being deprived of any frontage. They have over 335 feet there. I think they only need 160 or something? What is it, 160 in this area, Howard? For a frontage?
I think the frontage.
125.
125.
In this area, right?
This is residential.
A? Yeah, I would think it's A. Res A, 125, yeah.
Did you say your house was that old, or 12 was that old?
Our home was 1804, 1806, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it's all original post and beam, and it's a beautiful home.
Nice.
Yeah, it's cool.
Who did you have write this up? Because they put the three blurbs on here that we always like to see when...
This was that DGT survey group about a Newbury report?
Yeah. Usually these three blurbs, these three notes?
Mm-hmm.
We put them when we see something that's a flag to any prospective purchaser.
Okay.
There are no flags here. You have frontage, you have area, you have it all. Um, but it doesn't hurt to have them on there.
Sure, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
No, it's an A and R, so.
Yeah, I have no problem.
I had some familiarity with the Georgetown folks. I mean, I know that, um, all of this was sort of generated through an attorney, you know, when we, when we generated the attorney to do the purchase and sales.
Sure.
They had recommended DGT. I think they have, you know, a lot of work in the area, so I'm sure he wanted to be...
Golfed with him, played tennis with him, something like that.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 not that. But I mean, he probably just wanted to be better safe than sorry, you know?
Golfed with him, played tennis.
Yeah.
Went to school with him, so. I don't always write. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to endorse the A and R Plan of Land, um, for 24 Summer Street dated, what is that, 7/10/14? Dated and stamped by Edward Dixon. 7/10/14.
Seconded. And, and to add to that, one thing that, um, we haven't been doing with A and Rs is a matter of redundancy, but it's a matter of being thorough. You endorse with signature to the MYR, but we also have what's called a Form B, which is determination that subdivision approval is not required.
Okay.
So, uh, it's very common, and so I filled in, and we check off A, and we just consign to this, and then this just stays in the file.
And so we'd be endorsing the A and R?
Yeah.
And approving the Form B?
Yeah.
Approving the Form B?
Determination subdivision approval is not required. You are hereby notified, the planning board took the following action regarding the plan entitled Lot Line Alteration Plan of Land submitted by the above applicant, accompanied by a Form A application for determination by the planning board.
So it's like a COV for an A and R. Sounds like it, right?
Yeah.
Cool. I like it. Good, good record.
The, the A and R that's signed and endorsed, rather, by the board is what gets at the registry, and that's just for an internal...
This is ours, right? This is our record? Sounds clean, I like it. Um, Bob made the motion. Tilly, did you second that?
Yes, I did second that.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, any more discussion? Any comments, Howard? Anything? Any problems?
No.
Okay. Go ahead. What we act?
The date, the date.
Endorsed on August 13, 2014.
And, and you received this June 10th?
With, with the application.
So...
But you're...
All right, so we had a meeting June 9th, right, didn't we?
July 10th.
You sure that should be July?
It says received by a town clerk July 24th.
It's July.
This one appears to be July.
It says June.
It says June 10th, but I received, and I thought I'd included in the packet, an email from the applicant stating, "I've submitted the materials, but please formalize my application."
Oh, yeah, I saw that email.
On July whatever it was, because I told him I like to stage the A and R, so the planning board has two meetings in case there's any issue that comes up.
Sure, sure.
They have the 21 days for the second meeting, and he accepted that, and I said, "Okay, I'll hold."
Not a problem.
Until the date and the date was processed by the court on July twenty-fourth.
Remember, the twenty-one days doesn't mean it's fatal if we fail to act. It means that if a board did fail to act.
Right.
The applicant chose to, they could go to town clerk.
Yeah.
And get endorsed.
That, that was confusing to me, because I was trying to follow what the um, state law is, you know, for the A and R. And I think that the way they expressed it was the stamp date on the envelope.
Yeah.
And I think we're following.
From the mailing.
That somebody comes in.
Assuming it got mailed. Assuming someone actually would mail something.
Yeah, but you know, I wonder, you know, if, you know.
I bet it's silly that they're walking in and filing with me and so the date that's official is when it's on record with the court.
What does Janet know that if it's, if it's mailed into her that she has to use the date of mailing?
If it's mailed into her, she hands it to me and, and requests that I process it.
Okay.
Save the envelope.
Yeah.
In the file.
All right.
All right with that?
Yeah, fine.
Um, motion made and seconded to endorse the A and R with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all opposed or she carries? Excellent. Walk out till we sign it.
You know, we've got a Myar and a paper copy here. I'd like to have both of them signed.
Okay.
Sweet. And Chili, if you want to start that, you certainly can.
All right.
I like this. This is a good idea to have this.
I've requested of, of previous applicants to send me proof of recordation at the registry, because the booking page is on that.
Oh, yeah.
But this is just another.
Absolutely. Yeah, but this is more our vote and the information on it, right?
Is that something you guys will want me to get a copy of after I have it processed or for your record or?
So you're gonna bring that to the registry?
I'll give it to my attorney and then he's gonna have somebody file it, but I didn't know if you wanted a copy of the, of the approval for the registry of deeds or anything.
I, I asked that you send a scan of, of the registry receipt.
Sure.
Or some other notice of what the booking page is, because then I can get it off the registry website.
Did the vouchers go back?
Yeah, I'm sure I'll have some sort of official documentation I can get, so that won't be a problem.
Okay.
I think that's complete, Howard. Check it out and make sure we did it right, please.
Three signatures.
Mr. Conway.
That's it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Nicely done. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Be careful with those organic clippings that you're augmenting the, the graph with there. Oh, wow.
Great chipmunks. It's just great chipmunks.
We gotta protect our parks.
Do we wanna, do we wanna sign or what do we wanna do? Wanna just take two seconds?
Quickly sign, so.
Quickly sign it so you can wait for it to dry and you can walk out? Go for it, go. What, what is that?
Something, a fan or something.
Is that a fan? Is that the camera motor?
Yes, and you hear that at home too. It drives me crazy. Do you hear it?
It sounds like it's the camera motor.
Is it that thing?
It sounds like the camera motor.
That's something from CIA that's designed to make you insane. It's all fine. We have no problem with it. It's all good.
There you go.
Yeah, so the house is going to be up for sale?
It is, yeah. It just put up for sale last week.
Okay.
She's a teacher, I think, isn't she, Barbara Robinson?
Yeah, she just retired.
She's my kid's teacher, yeah.
She's a really nice woman.
She's an awesome teacher.
Yeah, she retired about two, two years ago, I believe. Yeah, she just recently got married and her and her husband are going down to Florida, yeah.
Mr. Conway, let that dry a little bit so it doesn't smudge when you roll it all up. Good luck.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a good evening.
Chair, you too, thank you.
Just wait for Howard to sit down. I'm presuming you're one oh two?
One oh two and others at this point.
Um, we're moving on now to um, the case of Form A, one oh two Pond Street.
One oh two Pond Street.
Yes.
Does that address have history?
Well, no.
May not.
I'll tell you a reason why after words.
Oh, no.
Hello, would you introduce yourself for the record, cameras, et cetera?
Sure, I'm Victoria Roberts.
Jamie Roberts.
Pleasure, folks. Hi.
Nice to meet you. Just tell you about what we're doing. Okay. Um, so my husband and I just purchased one oh two Pond Street and everything that comes with it. Um, uh, just within the past month or two. Um, we are wanting to convert the zoning, which is currently, I believe, seven lots, a parcel, a streetway, um, back into a single family lot. Um, our intention is to live here forever. We have no intention of selling off any of the pieces of property on here. Um, so we would like to just convert it back to one lot. Nothing's been done actually physically on the property, um, fortunately for us, so we're renovating the house that's there. Um, and uh, yeah, hoping to live there for the foreseeable future.
That sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, welcome to Georgetown.
Thank you.
To, to clarify some of the past history and, and the combination of the laws, if you look up on the screen. One, the, the, what was known as Pondview Estates was these six lots in one hundred Pond Street. And since the, the subdivision approval in tonight, the previous owners sold one hundred Pond Street off. So the A and R is considering these lots. And parcel A, which was subject to conservation, uh, a, a, a certificate or, or request that that land be given over, that was never done by the applicant. And so if this subdivision were to continue, they would have had to go through the whole process again anyhow. So this is still part of one hundred Pond Street. They're combining these lots as well as uh, what was laid out for the roadway.
Oh, and that parcel A?
Yep.
As part of what was supposed to happen, that was supposed to go to natural heritage, I believe?
Yeah.
And that was part of um, A?
I think it was an order of conditions.
An order of conditions, yeah, yeah. But that was all premised on the development of the subdivision, so now that's moved.
Right.
Is my understanding.
When I.
It's expired.
Yeah.
Right.
You, you had spoken with Concom?
Uh, we haven't actually sat before the commission yet, but I've spoken to Stephen frequently. Um, and he had told me that that, the order of conditions that that parcel was included in had been expired. So even if they had, like you mentioned, gone through with the development, they would have had to write a whole new order of conditions from the conservation commission standpoint.
Would you be interested in doing that, with this piece?
Um.
The way I'm looking at it, I don't think you have too much of a choice.
Well, I don't.
To be perfectly honest with you. Um, a little earlier this evening, well, it, it all hinges on that parcel right there. Because this was one hundred and this was one oh two. And the lot line used to be there, somewhere here. And then this and this were all purchased by a single entity. They applied for subdivision permit. Back to the history of it, this was approved as a seven lot subdivision.
Do you know about when that?
This was lot two.
When, when was that about?
What was that? Oh.
That was about two thousand and one, two, two, that went on for.
Oh, no, that was, no, it wasn't quite.
The last one is what you're talking about, when it finally got approved, but that's.
Oh, yeah, it's been up for a couple, but.
Yeah.
The one that did get approved, the subdivision, um, this was one lot of the seven. Now, this was lot, um, this was lot two, I believe.
Yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now, fast forward, it got its approval. They never broke ground. There were problems on this lot with Concom. There were some enforcement orders, I think, that went out. The other delay was this parcel was natural heritage, so in addition to the Concom permit, there was also a permit that needed to be received from Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. I think that carve off of this, that parcel, was some kind of mitigation that they came to. But I'm not really involved in that. I'm planning that's Concom. I try to keep in touch, but I, I can't carry it all. The issue is this. At some point, the developer came in and said, this parcel here, he wanted to be able to sell it because he had an owner that wanted to buy it. This board released that lot from covenant. Let that be a lesson to us. We released it from covenant on the premise that this is the frontage right here for that lot. Because this doesn't meet current zoning for frontage on Pond Street, nor does it now. I scaled it. You're shy. So if we were to approve this A and R, which would be a really elegant way to get rid of this subdivision off the books, don't get me wrong. Really elegant way. I would love doing it. The only problem I personally have is, if we did, you don't own this parcel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Someone else does.
Right.
They're not even in this room. We grant this A and R, we endorse this A and R, this person goes from buying a property that was gonna have frontage on this roadway, legal and legit, to being a non-conforming lot because that's the frontage. If that road isn't built, that lot depends on this road for frontage, as does yours. But I'm assuming you're living here.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So if we eliminate this by going in A and R, what's gonna happen is this folk, this, just one hundred Pond Street, if you're listening, one hundred Pond Street. I know who owns it. Cal, Cal, Cal. Calamore becomes a non, what is it? A non-. Lot without adequate frontage. I can't do that to that person. I could do it if they was sitting here saying, go ahead. I can't do that without them here. I don't think they want that done. So I'm really sorry, but you can't have, you won't have my vote tonight. And.
Are you wanting to see a subdivision go in there? Because that's the only way that, that frontage would happen.
Um.
What, what is, what is acceptable frontage?
In this area, this, this should be buck sixty?
Yeah.
I think it's a hundred and sixty feet. Yeah, the, the, the A and R doesn't say with a lot, yeah, it's, it's not.
Yeah.
Who drew this?
Ed Farrell?
Who?
Ed Farrell?
Yeah. Out of Woven?
Maybe you don't.
Hundred and sixty feet.
Yeah, you need one sixty. And here's your scale right here above.
Yeah, and that, that's exactly what I was looking at.
And it just doesn't, no, no, see, at that, at this point here, see what happened is. With this radius added here, your frontage is actually this point to this point here. And if that doesn't measure one sixty, excuse me, that person's frontage, if we approve this, has to be one sixty. And if that doesn't measure one sixty, then they're a non-conforming lot.
Well, you said you scaled it. What'd you come up with?
No, I, I didn't have a real scale. I, you know.
I mean, this is one twenty.
I did it like this. One of these deals, there's one twenty. Oh, boy, it's not even one twenty.
It's not one twenty. To make it one sixty would be here, but it looks like you wouldn't have enough frontage at that point.
So what was it before all this started to happen? I mean, the house exists, existed previous to this sub-development?
Yeah, it was two lots.
Where do you see the, the dotted line along Pond Street?
Crystal little red button. Don't point it at me.
Right here? That wasn't there before, a subdivision.
That's a site line. That's a site plan. Uh, that's a site easement.
Yeah.
So that when you're pulling out of the new roadway, of the proposed roadway, you can see the cars coming around up on, up Pond Street.
Right. So that was, that was the reason for that, along with drainage, I think. He was going to drain something.
Oh, they were gonna build sidewalk all the way down?
Yeah, a sidewalk.
And drainage and there were, there were a number of mitigations for certain.
So the year that that house was built, what was the frontage laws then?
I don't know. Oh, yeah, that, that may have been prior to um, to zoning. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, it was. That was the old house. That's true.
But it had more before than it does now. That's the problem.
Because it would have had.
More non-conforming.
It would have had this entire line.
Yeah.
Well.
No, I don't think so. That house existed for.
Yeah, it was, it's.
I mean, both of them are, are very old houses that are there. And I'm just, I'm just thinking, the only way that either one of these would ever conform is if a subdivision went in there.
Is if this road was built.
Well.
Or is if a road was built up the middle, which.
Yeah, I don't know.
We, we, first thing to do is, is to get in touch with the person that owns one hundred. I can talk with the, the zoning code enforcement officer tomorrow.
Hmm.
And then it just may be, um, it could be an application to do a shared driveway or something else, but we'll find a way
Yeah.
For that one hundred. And maybe he says, I accept the lot line or, or something like that. Well, we can figure it out.
I mean, I spoke with him to see where, because we were, you know, when we were looking at it, we were like, where's your property line? He kind of knew where the stakes were, but maybe that was when this was drawn up that.
Did you have an attorney when you, when you bought the property and did he go through all of these scenarios with you?
You realize you own a subdivision permit right now.
We do, yeah.
Your subdivision permit's expired, though.
It's no more.
It, it may or may not be.
But also, we need to look at the deed for one hundred Pond Street to see what it states.
Yeah, I think they've owned it for four years or something. They just, you know, they bought it four years ago, according to when I spoke with Justin.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, yeah, nice couple.
So that's when, yeah.
They, they seem pretty reasonable and we're happy that we were there to restore the house and, you know, try to bring the land, try to bring the place back to what, what we've heard. The place has always been a nice piece of property, you know, the previous owner that.
Very pretty and beautiful backyard, beautiful natural area.
Yeah.
It's great, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking forward to.
Really wonderful natural area.
Having that nice piece of land again and.
You, you even have a lot of open spaces, fishing wildlife land. I mean, see, see that little jog out there? That, that takes you, you're, you're bordering fishing wildlife land there. I mean.
Yeah, we've walked through the woods.
Idyllic. The only thing you have to make sure is you don't go.
Are you living there now?
Don't go too far that way.
We're not, we're not sleeping there, but we're.
The broadening gun club is, if you go too far.
Oh, yeah, no, we walked out to the wall and, you know, got lots of mosquitoes and.
Don't go too far that way, you know.
Well, that was the, the.
We could see the stakes and everything.
Harry, what Harry isn't telling you is part of the reason for the restriction is to get to the state property, but also was because of, of the gun range there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so that's.
Yeah.
And I thought for a while they were interested in owning that piece. I don't know.
Oh, the parcel?
That, no, that, just that little section.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so that they could have some more.
Yeah.
More buffer like.
A buffer, yeah.
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 Um.
What is this, this? That was the access to the open space.
Yeah.
I see. And the access, the, the open space would have gone.
Back.
Um, yeah, it would be, in other words, this was gonna be an open space parcel.
Right, right.
And this would have brought you to this open space parcel, which would be, this was all, all of this was an open space parcel that was gonna, supposedly going to go to the conservation commission. Because this area up here or, oh, yeah, because it, it abuts the fishing wildlife land right here. And there's actually, what is it, Prescott or something's up here with another entrance further up here. And um, that was your access to get in there. There was actually a parking for one or two cars right there.
Stole, I think.
It was gonna be an entryway for it.
I feel like those lots on Lake Cap, they don't have a hundred and sixty two square feet.
Yeah, well, grandfather, I mean, I.
Where do we go from here? I mean, I feel like I'm just like knocking things down.
Can we continue it?
Well, you can, because when they file, you have the next meeting.
We can, we can continue this.
So we have another, we have another meeting for this? I mean, before you hit twenty-one?
Yeah.
If you can, you can decide what you're gonna do.
I guess I would ask what, like, I don't really know what to do, I mean, because I can't.
I'll, I'll talk to the zoning code enforcement officer and we'll look at the deed on one hundred and, and answer the questions for the board at the next meeting.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have some kind of answer, right?
Yeah.
May, maybe it's as simple as a quick court. Can you, can, is there such a thing as a court that's just real easy to permit?
Well, it's a special, right?
I would, if it was me, I'd check with the attorney to see how you can clean it up, because you really don't want this hanging on.
No.
You know, and you, you know.
Definitely not.
I have no objection.
Because we're not building seven hours. Right, I think you have people here who would love to see this work for you.
This would be.
But this is a problem. And I'm, I'm just intuitively, I'm sure this is solution.
There, there has to be something, I mean, you know, there are paper streets in this town. I mean, there are paper streets.
There shouldn't be.
Well, I know there shouldn't be, but there are.
But, but there's easements and.
Yeah, that's another front.
Like, there, there's ways to, it, there's concerns, we'll get them addressed and have them at the next meeting and we'll have answers.
And.
So there's no way to grandfather, because we're not really breaking ground, we're not doing a new development or anything. It's just, these houses exist, we want it to return the way it existed. We can't go back to the original existence.
Yeah, because the subdivision combined the lots.
It changed everything.
Yeah. And at the very least, that radius, this radius, we, we know, I know for a fact this radius cuts some of this lot out. So you are less conforming.
I don't care about the radius. We can square it off, but that doesn't give enough beat, then maybe it doesn't.
Maybe it's something as simple as that, maybe. I don't know.
It's one twenty and.
Bring it back to wherever it was. I don't know.
Yeah. Is all of this? Actually this lot or is, this is called drainage easement?
Yeah, there, there was supposed to be an easement there so that, so that the drainage from this, from this roadway could go. And, and the piping was out here. This is the discharge. And from here, this is where the, the sidewalk had to be.
And, but, but this.
Those easements are on his deed.
And, and this, yeah, that's what I thought.
On one hundred Pond Street.
That's the whole parcel of it.
This is the whole parcel, not just this little jobber here.
The tar line.
Right, right, but, but this is, this is the parcel.
Which you'd want to extinguish anyway.
Yeah, well.
You want to extinguish that. You don't want that easement on your property, on his property. It shouldn't be there.
He's asked about it and he.
I'm sure he wants that extinguished.
Yeah, we would like to get rid of it. I didn't know. Is that the same process?
No.
Okay.
He, he owns the easements he needs to extinguish.
Are you sure that's not an easement, the same as over here?
That easement is in the town of Georgetown. We have it on his land, don't we?
On Calamore?
Yeah. Those should have all been, that, those should have gone over when all the confidence went over. Should have been the Form A. All those easements should, just like this triangle here with the sight line, that's an easement that should have been transferred, again, should have been.
Is that what the writing says right there that you can't read?
Yeah, it says site triangle easement, yeah.
All right, so I'll, I'll look into that as well.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and, and, and you, you know Mr. Calamore, right?
I'm, I, I met him, yeah, him and his wife.
I, I think, you know, maybe Doc could work with you on this, with, with the two of you.
Nice bottle of red.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good name. So you're suggesting we bring them next time?
Um, or something.
We'll talk over the next two weeks and then if it's as simple as, as his written agreement to it or something, then we can present that.
Howard, your friend.
Yeah, seriously, yeah. Yeah, I want to, I want to help.
We're here every couple of weeks, one for one, for a couple hours, you know, he's, he's in the office pretty much every day and he can help you out with it.
I still, I still want you to think about the conservation restriction in the back, if you would. Because that would be really, that would be really a, a good thing to have for yourself.
Oh, my God, you don't even have to do a restriction. You, you could do a donation of land if you wanted to. If you really didn't want to develop this, you could do a donation of land and get a, a hack of a tax break.
And then you're not responsible for anyone, you know.
Saying that that parcel A part or just make a, make a line?
You can line, you can put a line anywhere you want, make a donation to the town and, and, yeah.
And that's less taxes.
Yeah.
That's why we want this back to one lot.
Much less, plus the donation is, it's a donation to the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Value, there is value to that donation.
Are you still seeing it as a benefit of having it as that public access? Because without the road there, you know, there's no, that, that access to get into that is not there anymore.
No, there isn't, there isn't really, is what she's saying.
You can come down through, through Prescott down here. The, the, the Boy Scouts did a, did a run through here off of Prescott.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking more of keeping away from gun property, you know, because they are, that's a, you know, very busy.
Right.
Rifle range and, and gun range.
That way, though, I think.
Are they further off that way?
The ranges, the ranges go out, yeah, the ranges go out that way, I feel like the.
The, the ranges over here, but I want to say Prescott Lane or something's up here. When it comes all in and the cul-de-sac, off that cul-de-sac is, is a, like a twenty foot right away that the Boy Scouts cleared out years ago. And it leads to another portion of this parcel or something that connects to that parcel. The trail will track there.
You've got natural habitat too there, that, the blading turtles, you know, you've got things that need to be protected and it's a nice way to do it, really. You know, once that's done, nobody will build there. You'll never have a neighbor.
Yeah.
We, we can talk to Steve about the whole order of conditions and get all that clarified and then talk to him about.
Oh, what a great way to wrap up all those enforcement orders, then. Oh, what a great way to wrap up all those enforcement articles, gosh, that's called mitigation. Write that down, mitigation. They love that word.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, sorry for, uh.
It's slowing you down, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, no, didn't, yeah.
I'll play with it, I'll tell you, install the direction.
I'm up to the church.
Get a quietness, right?
Oh, it's sponsors, okay.
I was holding a piece of metal down where I was drilling.
Supposed to wear gloves when you do stuff like that.
Supposed to use a clamp.
I'll give you some gloves too. Okay, and, um. The, hi.
Hi, Lou.
Uh, the hearing's closed, but we're just here to say hi, I guess.
Kumbaya.
And we're looking at the decision. Um, there was an email, um, we're looking at a draft decision, you've probably already seen it. Uh, there was an email that was sent from, uh, the chairman, Rob Hoover. He asked us, uh, to take a look at this, uh, specifically to ask that we not make any decisions on it tonight or anything like that. And that we avoid, uh, any discussion about the, um, inclusionary housing.
Wait, wait, you're on attorney leave?
Yeah.
Isn't that what we're doing?
We're doing spot first.
Well, this is.
Oh, okay, I saw Tom, I guess, and.
If you want.
Oh, that's right, you did, you did them both.
I did spot and I didn't know if you wanted to hear spot. No, no, I didn't know if you wanted, how you wanted to entertain spot. Because only one of the.
No, this is good, now you can do spot and he still pays you, right? And it's like, double dip in here.
Double dip, baby.
No, I'm sorry, spot was next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On, on the agenda, and I'm sure there's just gonna be a couple of moments because of, of what the attorney was alluding to, where two members that were part of the vote aren't here, so.
Right, wanna just, um, deal with spot to say that we're not gonna deal with spot?
And do I, because of the, because of special permit, do, I mean, site plan, do you want me to sign something? Because there's that thirty-day rule for that, so I, I, I need to sign an extension.
Spot?
Yeah, when you, when you have, you have to sign the, the approval of the plan, once the hearing flows within a period of time. So I just want to sign it so there's no constructive approval without the signature of the board.
Site plan approval?
Yeah, site plan approval is a different beast.
Interesting.
I know, that's, I just don't want, you know.
You want to give an extension of?
Yeah, so just until, just so that you have in your file.
Sorry, I thought we had covered that.
I don't recall if we did, so, well, on the record, as the attorney for the spot, um, I'm granting an extension to sign and vote on that, um, final endorsement to the plan, um, from this meeting until. The end of, I don't know what days.
I thought you had until the end of September, I'm sorry.
That's thirty, that's why, I just don't want it or, yeah.
Site plan, thirty days, not ninety, huh?
No, because site plan, it's not forty-eight. It's not a special permit, so it doesn't trigger the same things, so.
The decision is due ninety days from the date of the public hearing starting. And because we've.
But we already made the decision.
Yeah.
It's supposed, yeah, it's.
We already made the decision.
Right, you're supposed to issue a decision though for site, but it doesn't, my point is, is I'm not trying to do anything, I just want you to know there's no constructive approval, it's not an issue. So I grant the, the extension on the record, so I just.
Well, I'll take a motion to accept the, uh, the extension.
I move that we, the board, uh, accept the offered extension of time.
To the, uh, end of October, was that it, September?
No, it was the end of September.
The September, okay. Uh, last day of September, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Bye, most times, thank you.
Alright.
Good information.
Now you can go on my block.
Now turning leave.
Before we return.
Before we go to turning leave.
Are there any comments from board members regarding the site plan or the decision that need to be addressed quickly right now before the next meeting? So we don't go again. Harry, you had sent me an email, uh, about the dates on the Myar?
Yeah, something like that.
Could, could you clarify that?
Yeah, uh, if I recall what they are.
The Myar that we have, the date seven sixteen fourteen and.
Yeah, that, no, there was the approval, I think it was the approval that we needed to sign, um.
You know, we did, we didn't, maybe not the revision date, because we came in a couple of days after the sixteen, but we made changes to the plan up through that date I emailed you, which was the two days after the hearing. Do you want me to put a revision date?
Uh, I, no, no, I'm, I'm, I think I'm thinking of something else, I'm thinking, thinking of Superior Steel or something, wasn't it?
No, no, I thought you had mentioned in your email that you'd like to have the Myar date to the date the board voted on it. But then there are conditions that they were gonna change a few things.
Right, right.
The tree species and you wanted a, a revision date to it.
Right, yeah, it needed a revision date, because, um, the board, that night, when we dealt with the site plan, we looked at something that said, I want to say it was, the date was the sixteenth?
Seven sixteen.
Right, and then when the final draft of the site plan itself came out, it, it had the same date because it wasn't rev'd, there was no rev date on it.
I know, I saw that too.
Yeah, and that can be confusing.
No, I didn't.
Just to add a rev date to that.
Right.
I'll, I'll redevelop my lives.
Anyway, when we write up the decision.
It's just gonna have the, the, the date, the Myar, or the date the site plan was, was voted on. And then the revision date.
Then the rev date so that we can reference the plan accurately, right?
Right.
Not a problem. I'll make sure that happens, I'll call Richard first thing in the morning. Because you do have Myar Lars, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get new Myar Lars, that's perfect. Thank you.
And I just also just wanted the board to quickly, uh, discuss, um, with the spot, the plans that they're gonna request for recording.
Ooh.
Quickly, if, if it's just gonna be S D one.
Would you mind if I look, because I'm, I'm limited for what the registry will allow me to file? So just to make sure. See, I have to endorse, I have, none of this says, I have to change everything, because usually you don't record a site plan for these things. So I'll have to get, I have to have a special, um.
The registry.
Yeah, I have to have a registry block and this does not comply because of that, this, other things don't comply. I can't, so if you tell me the sheets you want, I have to make them comply. This one can.
Well, this is, this is just the existing conditions.
Oh, is there any?
Why, they won't accept that?
No. I can't, that, they won't accept either.
But part of the decision will be the other sheets.
Mm-hmm.
The E L one, E L two.
Mm-hmm.
But the board's gonna require just the site plan, S D one for recording.
That, that, that's how we usually did it, the rest is just part of something that we keep two file copies of.
Okay.
And, and historically, that's how my understanding of it.
This one for recording?
Yeah.
And that's the one we signed, right?
Yes.
S D one, right, so I just have to have a, make the S D one, okay, okay.
You need to change the title block on that and lose the locus.
Yeah, I have to, I have to change a whole bunch of stuff, because that, none of that is recordable. Like a lot, like the, see that locus map, because it's a photo, not good. A, a few things have to be changed, so I might have to create a recordable version.
Thought that was old tech though before, now, now they can.
Let me tell you, oh, at least it's on Middlesex South, but they can be tough. I'll just make sure, whatever they'll, they'll take, we'll make sure it confirms.
Cool. I'll tell you, i- is that the motor drive in that camera?
Yeah, I think it is.
Or is that like a ventilation thing then, in the other room or something?
I think that too.
It's the subway.
I don't know.
The Georgetown subway.
I just want to point out, there is air conditioning?
Absolutely.
I think it's just cold outside.
They gotta fix just before the select.
Let me tell, I went, it, it was still warm then though, they did, huh? You, last time I was here, Tom, ninety-three degrees.
Oh, brutal, 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 it was rough.
It was.
Oh, we did our best work, no question about that.
After she changes on.
Do you remember Tim? He looked like he'd taken a shower.
Yeah, he, he sat over in front of the fan for the last half minute.
Oh, everything is there that we agreed upon?
I felt bad.
It's, it's just, this is the final crossing of the tier, dot of the I.
Yeah.
That was it.
But you, you know, sometimes you miss out on when you redo it.
Yeah, no, I'll go over them again, of course.
Section seven provisions, any changes in the approved site plan shall be submitted to the town planner for review by the planning board. Right?
Are you on?
We're, we're, um, no, we're on the spot.
Okay.
If requested or required revisions are determined to be substantial, the applicant must submit a revised site plan and supporting documents to the planning board for approval.
Okay, so.
See that, bros?
Seven provisions.
Yeah, I'm not changing it, I'm just calling it out. It looks good. And keep that in mind for when we talk about something else.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, this is.
That looks good, yeah. Everything alright, Gil?
Well, I'm reading the dates, okay?
Uh-huh.
The extension is till September the thirtieth, so it was submitted June twenty-third. Okay, so we got July, August and September thirtieth is our extension date, so that is thirty, sixty, ninety.
Because it's not a forty-eight permit, that's why, it's just site plan approval, so it has completely different requirements.
By the time, our next meeting and whatever.
I think we're just.
Maybe we should make it beyond September thirtieth.
No, well, this is, the spot, this can happen at the next meeting.
Yeah, this will happen at the next meeting.
Yeah, but even the next meeting is, is too late, right?
Not anymore.
No, because she extended it to September thirty, right?
So we have an extension.
So you, okay, that's all I was checking on. I gave you my, I submitted my corrections.
Oh, your speaker fell.
Correct that? When, when I emailed you, the spot number six.
I don't recall any comments from you about the spot decision.
Yeah.
Do you have them now? Well, you have them written there.
I kinda wrote a lot of it, but I, email is a lot clearer. I scribbled this here.
Rather than have them discussed out, on, uh.
Bring them up now.
That's why you answered me too, you said bring them in to the meetings.
Don't tell them like the present, go for it.
So I thought you read it.
Don't tell them like the present.
I, I just felt like number six, it should have been, um.
Number six, underdefining the fact?
The same words, uh.
Underdefining the fact, page three?
On that page, yeah.
Okay. Page three, number six, zoning board of appeals?
I think we should use the same words as the zoning board of appeals did.
And what were those?
Uh, well, basically they were for the modification of, uh, uh, the pre, the non-conforming sign on the facade, and so that was, that was basically, when you read this, you know, it doesn't really clearly say.
The zoning board of appeals. Conditions of those Z B A decisions remain in effect and are not subject to change by the planning board.
Okay.
You, you're not happy with that?
No, I think you need more detail there.
The zoning board of appeals.
And I think by using the zoning board appeals writing and from their decision would be, you know, more apropos. It's not the way we would have written it, it's the way they should have written it and approved it.
Would, would we have to, um, in, in effect, quote the entire decision, or can we just reference it?
No, you can just, you can just.
Can we incorporate it by reference?
What I did was I had picked out, um, the pertinent part of it, and, um, they had written in there, um, um, the special permit is to modify the existing non-conforming signage. And that, that's what they gave, was a special permit. Then they gave a finding that.
And this is finding?
Yeah, the finding is right here on, on the last paragraph, and, um, I think that should be repeated. In fact, they didn't even say they gave us special permit, they just said, the special permit application is desirable, but that is the finding.
Okay.
Because the board also found is what really they did.
Okay.
So they, that they will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts and will not cause an excess of that particular, I think that part, you know. And that's, that's it, basically, is that.
Well, did we find that, or did the?
They did.
They did.
We didn't, we didn't address anything about the sign, that was already.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we just deferred to their special permit.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So should we point out that we just deferred to their permit? We really didn't.
You can do that too.
Raise the issue or?
Yeah, I, I, I can add, just reference the number of it.
Yeah.
In the one or two sentences.
Right, yeah.
And maybe the date, I mean, reference the date of the decision and make it a little more clear that that's what we're referring to?
That's it.
Okay, I like it. I agree with you, bro.
Because we didn't have anything to do with that.
We don't really need a vote for that, I mean, I think we're good with that, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, no?
And then the other thing was, I had sent you was, there was discussion about a tree planting, you didn't put that in here at all, so.
No, it's on the site plan.
I'm looking at the site plan.
The, the, no, the plan itself, the actual drawing, right?
It's on the plan itself, okay, alright. So on theirs, does it say, you know, what kind of tree and what size and all that?
Yep.
Great.
It has some like details of the planting, where it's gonna be, the size of the tree.
When is that gonna be done, does it say that?
New tree, three inch caliber, Sergeant Cherry, a pruneus sergeant.
Is that both the trees, because both of them got cut, right?
There, there's only one in front of the spot, the other one that got caught isn't subject to this side plan, that was in front of, uh, pizza factory.
Oh, okay, in front of the pizza right there, yes, the pizza place, yeah.
What kind of tree was it gonna be?
Sergeant Cherry.
Sergeant Cherry, a pruneus sergeant.
Sergeant Cherry. Okay.
And, and just for the record, I spoke with the tree warden and he said, as long as it's not the tree we just took out. Because he, he's having an issue with, with the type of tree that's up and down the street, yeah, they, they grow too big into the lines, that was the problem.
Glad you pointed that out, Howard, I just want to make it clear to anybody and everybody that, that there's a lot of, there might be scuttlebutt around that the applicant took the tree down. That was not done, those trees were not removed by the applicant, those trees were removed by the tree warden, um, who was the only one that can cut a street tree. And, uh, he had his reasons, they were interfering, I believe, with the wires.
With the wires and, and also just, uh, they were the wrong tree for the location, so.
And he's the only one that can do that.
They had, um, started to develop issues of health and dropping limbs and everything else, so.
That's it, that's all I had.
Wrap that up and we'll bring this up at the next, um, at the next meeting, so that we can have an input from, uh, the two other members. And now we're talking about turning leaf.
Provided in your packet, supplemental packet tonight, uh, is a copy of the draft approval of a definitive subdivision with, uh, handwritten, uh, comments from the attorney, a copy of the chartered agreement that was referenced in the decision, as well as the form G.
Who's this, is this, uh, Eifel, John Eifel?
No, no, attorney man for the, for the.
Oh, from you, oh, okay.
Her comments, I, I wanted to make sure that she had a chance to review and be prepared to answer any questions from the board. Just some clarifications from her. Form K, a form M.
Well, we just got these, so.
Right, but, but.
Next meeting.
These are your forms, not mine, though.
But isn't she just, the editing here is from you?
Right, I haven't, I have not edited the, the decision to reflect her comments, I'm just providing to the board what her comments are.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go through what our comments are?
Oh, yeah.
And find out what ours are. Any of those happen to line up, uh, corrections and can't hurt, right? But I, I, I do just wanna, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, the chairman's asked that we refrain from touching upon the, um, inclusionary housing sections.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you can, they can, you can be part of that discussion. He specifically asked that of you as a favor. I'd like to.
I'd like to under that.
Respect that.
I didn't know what your, what's your process, because you were actually the chair at the time of the decision and the existing chair isn't the, you know, wasn't a voting member, so I had put you down as the signatory, am I not? you know, wasn't a voting member. So, I had put you down as the signatory. Am I not?
The, the chairman can, can sign. That, that's just a cover letter that, that's sent on.
Right, I just put it everywhere.
But in the back, it's going to have.
Okay, that's why.
They'll have all my decisions in the final.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just something that's sent to the clerk, so that the clerk has notice. Tilly, um, you want to kick it off? Anything that jumps out at you and screams to be changed?
I just wanted to see it, because I haven't shown that one to you.
No, I thought, I thought overall, it was really good. This one is yours, no?
Yeah, one without any edits. I just wanted to add, um, while you're preparing to talk with the waivers, what the board considered with the waivers.
Where are you, Howard? Talk to me.
Uh, you can, page five, requirements. Falling conditions have been issued by the planning board. Those are not necessarily the waivers, but it's what the board considered for mitigation. I just want those to be somehow in the decision.
Understood. And I, I have a couple of comments after that of her about E and F and G and K.
Anything on page two?
Well, where, where are you, Tilly? You're pretty, pretty much, uh, good. I don't want to hog the show, but.
You probably have the same ones as I do.
I bet.
Go for it.
What about you, Ralph?
He's going to discuss it.
Where am I, though?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, the first, the first thing that jumped out at me was, uh, this is baby stuff. Page three, um, number five. And, uh, it talks about the, um, the, um, the waiver from the 26 feet of pavement. And it says, um, requirement, a typical crossway, roadway cross-section requires 26 feet of pavement. And in place thereof, allow 24 feet of pavement as shown on the plans. And I believe there, it is 24 for the majority, but I thought there was a section that was sub 24.
Is 22.
Right, so, I would respectfully suggest that you cross out the number 24 and cross out feet. And in between those two cross-outs, just add the word width. And it would finally read, cross-section that requires 26 feet of pavement and in place thereof, allow width of pavement as shown on plans. I thought that was a clean way, cleaning it up, if that works.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What's shown on the plans is what we approved. That's what we looked at. That's what we did. You good with that, Tilly?
Yeah.
Good.
Great. Um, and slip into the next page, page four. Uh, oh, excuse me, I'm not going there. That's inclusionary. We're, we're not going there. I'm very sorry. We're not going there. Let's, uh, if, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll hold that for next time. Excuse me, page six. If we go to page six, and we're under, um, E, requirements. Just a typo. It says acceptance by the town of Georgetown of the applicant's to gift. So, lose the to, T-O there. I just had a question on that, and if we want to tweak this a little, I'll tweak it, but, um, the requirement is the acceptance. Uh, acceptance of the town of Georgetown's gift. And, you know, I always got so messed up, and there was so much, uh, back and forth about things. How does this work now? The planning board can accept a parcel of land on behalf of the town, or the Concom can do it. Or, it has to go to the selectmen for the acceptance. The selectmen can accept.
Only the selectmen can accept, but they can accept, um, under the authority of a board. But you recommend the acceptance, and then they accept it.
And then they accept it.
Yeah.
And when they accept it, um, they can accept it as either Article 97 conservation land or municipal land.
However you direct and recommend. Yep, and then it's up to them. That, that board has a full right, and then they, no matter what, though, they always sign the deed that grants them it, so that they demonstrate acceptance.
Right, okay. And then, the town then, at that point, has to go to town meeting?
No.
And accept it?
Believe it or not, with roadways, you do that, because there's an obligation. But with, um, open space parcels, you can convey. And you don't have to get town meeting approval, because there's no, there's no, um, continuing obligation. You don't, you're not accepting.
You can do anything.
Yeah, you don't have to accept it, because you're not getting Chapter 90 funds, nothing.
So, it can be accepted simply through the act of the selectman?
Right.
The selectman.
And the petition is before them via your power. You move and recommend that I go with that deed to them.
Mm-hmm, and the deed would specify purpose?
It, it can. It's up to you. I, when I've done them before, you just say, here's the open space parcel. Conveyed to the town.
Knock yourself out, yeah.
And it can either be overseen by.
Management and control of.
Planning board. It can be under the control of the DP, you know, usually it doesn't go DPW, because it's not a real board. It can go to the Conservation Commission, which is empowered to hold, um, land. I should say oversee land, because it's always held by the inhabitants of the community.
Interesting part, and I'm not really talking to you, I'm just talking to.
Yeah, that's your, that's yours.
How I always saw this parcel, um, and I'm kind of a, a map geek. I sort of saw this parcel as part of the greenway. And I also saw it as, um, a very uniquely situated piece of land that, um, may, may, at some point, help the water department to connect from Burnet to, um, essentially Lisa and, um, North.
Shore Street and all, right?
Yeah. It, it would take a few, um, directional drills, and it would take maybe one more parcel of land to be acquired or easements. But I see a connection that way, and, um.
Have you talked about it with the water department?
With Luke? Um, gee whiz, it may have come up once or twice. And, um, I also spoke with Glenn.
Yeah.
About it. Uh, the, the majority of, sort of some sketches, some napkin drawings, and, or maybe they were a little better than napkin drawings. But anyway, it may help. Um, I'm concerned that if this goes directly to Concom, it becomes Article 97 land, and then to change the use, in order for the town to use it as water, you know, we'd need literally an act of legislature to change the use if it became a municipal versus a conservation use. So, I'm a little concerned about that. And if I can just ask you a question?
Please, question me.
Really, um, have you finished with Concom yet?
Yep. We just fought, we just recorded our word of conditions.
Okay. Excellent, great.
Thank you very much.
Great.
But I think the implication is that we could recommend to the selectmen to define the land.
Yeah, I, I would say for municipal purposes. It was how I would, that, that would be how I would have it on the deed for municipal purposes.
And what you do is, when I come before you with the deed, you actually, um, recommend changes to, you, you have to recommend it to the board. I can't go there on my own accord. You have to actually suggest that I go forward. I mean, it is, it's in my condition that I have to donate the open space, but there's no, there was no specification on it.
And there's no other board that's requiring it?
The, the, oh, the, um, the Concom says I'm, I have to maintain it as open spa, I mean, like, I'm donating that to the.
Well, can be open space. We have open space that is municipal, not necessarily.
No, what I meant was that, yes, they said, okay, that's your mitigation. You're giving the town 14.65. And that's the other thing. I, I tweaked the area amounts, just because it's a little higher for what was non-jurisdictional. It's just, it's silly. It went up by like, you know, point oh-two, and then, you know.
1.89 acres and 81,503 square feet. So, those were. That is recommended by the attorney and.
So, where is the greenway going to be in here, in, in this deed?
What do you mean? I lost you.
You, you, you mentioned the water department.
Hmm? Yeah, from the stub that would come off through the open space.
Where are you going to put in, in place, uh, also the greenway? Where are you going to specify in this request to the selectmen?
It, well, that's going to be in the, clarified on the deed, right?
Greenway is an overall concept of adjoining lands. It's not actually something that is, would go in a deed.
So, but to, to address that, Tilly, what, what I changed this to read is recommend the town of Georgetown Board of Selectmen accept the applicant's gift for municipal purposes, a 14.635 acre.
I like the greenway in there. I mean, we've been talking about the greenway, the greenway, and now you're.
It has to stay open space, yeah.
Right.
But, I mean, I, I guess our purpose is, is, you know, you, you, you and the Conservation Commission, but it can't, we can't be, it has nothing to do with us, basically. So, the fact that you.
Has to do with us.
Exactly, but I, I would not want my decision to have anything about a greenway, because we, I can't control that. I can give, here you go. That's your space.
Right.
Now, it's between this planning board, the Conservation Commission, and the selectmen to make all other decisions.
Right.
All I'm doing is giving you the title.
You just, yes.
And I think that what we would do then is recommend to the selectmen.
That's what I'm, you know.
But not in this document.
No, no.
Wouldn't be a part of this document. It would be part of, I don't know what document, but. Well, a, a letter from the planning board about the purpose of accepting, and you can outline the reasons why you recommend the accepting of the land. The, the, I agree with Tilly that the greenway needs to be noted somewhere.
Absolutely.
But the, the one issue I have is, is the greenway is a concept. It's, it's not necessarily a, a written plan.
Yeah.
Or a policy or something like that. So, for here.
Right, it's not appropriate.
It's not an entity for here. But in the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, you can outline all the reasons why, for, for the purposes of.
Absolutely.
The greenway that's discussed with Park and Rec, uh, the, the coordination with DPW and their water lines.
Your water connection, connectivity.
Right. Recreational purposes of the citizens of Georgetown can outline all the reasons why you recommend.
Well, in other words, you have in parentheses the open space plan, so that's not going to be in there?
Open space parcel.
Parcel, rather.
That, that's, the open space parcel is what's noted on the plan. Parcel F is, and it has.
That's how we title it, right?
Open space parcel.
That's what it's called on the plan. That's what we call it.
Maybe that should be noted, you know. Well, you did. You followed it with it.
Yeah, I, I think that's pretty good. I, I was just, I was just concerned about, um, when this actually transfers to. Uh, did you pick that up somewhere else that I missed?
The what?
When the transfer occurs. Is that prior to issuance of occupancy permits?
It really should be. It's, it like, you know, maybe prior to the issue, the issuency of like, the, one of the last ones, but not before, because we would never convey up, you know, immediately. Number one, we don't even.
Yeah, you can't, because.
No, but we would absolutely convey, like, if you wanted security, so you know we're going to do it. So, I don't know. Some people call it out as, you know, before I get my fifth to the last occupancy permit, something where I can't get any more until I do this. Things like that happen. And I can't get a release of my bond, things like that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where, where, where we would plug in a, um, I mean, I know that this has a requirement. This is a requirement, but it doesn't have a, a time stamped to it, so.
I want to be more specific in the letter, not, you know, as, if you're saying that you can't do this in the conditions, but in that letter.
Oh, no, we can do, we can do this in, in the conditions.
Yeah, just this.
The greenway issue, though.
The green.
I want it clearly in there.
I think in the letter, definitely.
Absolutely.
Municipal can be many, many things that we haven't even thought of yet.
Would that letter be the appropriate place to put the timing?
No, no.
It would be in here. The conveyance should be in here.
Yeah, conveyance. And maybe that's something we can, we can all sort of think about for, Julie, turn that. How long? Well, I, I don't know where it would be. I mean, I, I look at it as though, where would you be? Where would you be, the developer, be in the process when you were ready to turn that parcel over? And I'm trying to think. It would probably be.
Yeah, because we have to pay taxes on it until we turn it over. So, there's no real incentive for us to keep it beyond.
Yeah, you don't want to hang on to it, but then again.
How long does the process take?
To get the town to accept? I mean, my guess is between the discussions. It, when I normally do this, you're going to laugh. It takes me sometimes 90 days to get everything done.
And you're also working with town council, because town council will want to review the deed.
Yeah.
And you'll have to get on a selectmen's agenda.
It takes, it, from the day you tell me you like the deed, it takes me about 90 days. It's, it's a very, it shouldn't be long, you wouldn't think, but it is.
It's, it's complicated.
Where in the process of the subdivision?
That, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, that's why, so I say.
The 90-day thing can hold up, you know, I mean.
That's.
Ready for an occupancy permit and.
You could really hurt us, yeah.
Sitting on that, yeah. That's, that's why I'm trying to think through it right now.
That's a 50% lock?
I was going to say like, five last ones.
Of release, of lock release?
After the.
Occupancy permit.
Oh, see, I was going to say after 17 of them, I figured at the end, because you could sell pretty fast.
How, how quickly can you, can this be done?
It, from the, that's the problem, is even, you know, trying to get it done is going to be time, it's going to be difficult.
Because I think it should be done before an occupancy permit, myself.
Oh, you can't, I mean, you would hold it up remarkably. I mean, and, and we wouldn't be ready to do that.
90 days, they can put up a house and a road?
No, 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 you have to understand.
I don't think so.
No, 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 you need to understand about the, so what ends up happening, right, is you put in the road, and then you, you secure your, your building permit. We still have to do, like, make those connections. We have, still have to do that little path. There's a lot of things that are involved before we would convey away that land, um, and before you'd want us to. So, my guess is, we won't be ready to do that until, you know, maybe, like, let's assume we get our decisions at next meeting, we get it, we file. We wouldn't be ready to probably convey until May.
Would you be able to, uh, convey it, so?
We want to convey it.
Well, you could prepare, town council, planning board, selectmen, all could have it prepared for annual town meeting, which is the first week of May.
Well, we don't go to town meeting.
Yeah, we don't need town meeting. Maybe prepare is the key. Maybe that's it. Maybe preparation, prep, preparation of the documents.
Yep.
And submission of a draft deed.
Yep.
At the release of the first lot.
And what do you, what, I have to, I apologize, what do you mean?
Of the first lot. Well, you'll be asking for a release of covenant from the first lot.
Oh, to sell the first lot, just to give them a draft deed?
You've got your roadway in, you're already a fine-to-coat. You're ready to sell your first lot. You're asking for covenant release. And you're giving a draft deed.
Oh, a draft deed is, I can have it done tomorrow. I mean, it's more, you know, is it appropriate to convey at that point? That's all. We have to have it done one year after.
But are you going to be selling, are you selling lots before the road is built?
Can't.
Well, you can't sell them.
Nope, right.
But I will put, put them under agreement 100%, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But I won't, the actual sale, yeah, we, we had talked about that. So, would it be appropriate if we just talked, well, I'm not going to do that. I will wait till you're ready. But, yeah, um, we could, before I ask for the first covenant release, I will deliver to you a draft deed. So, is that fine, Howard? You could do that.
Could we put that in?
Yeah.
As a requirement?
You should prep, probably.
Oh, you should throw it in right there.
There.
A draft deed will be delivered, oh, no, that would be prior to release of the first lot.
Yep.
Right? In that section, what's, don't we have a section that says that?
There's something back here.
Further up?
It actually said, I think, um.
Prior to endorsement, should be prior to the release of the first lot, or something like that, no? That's how it usually works. Prior to any lots being released. Look at that. Why can't we add a, on page nine, we have A B, A B, E, and F. Okay, so, we can fix the, the, um, the lettering there, right? Because we have A, B, E, and F, and then we can add it in after one.
Yeah, and then we would just say, deliver a draft deed before. That's, that's absolutely 100% perfect.
That's before the lots are released. We have a draft deed.
That's why, but we're not doing that. He's changing to, it's just a draft deed, that's the point.
Bear in mind, we don't release lots until a binder code is down, utilities are ready, this thing's ready. People are buying real lots. We're not making the mistake we made on Pond Street, releasing a lot before the street was in.
Right.
Because these people are depending upon frontage in that deed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, please, we learn from our mistakes, right?
We do, we do, we are allowed to secure a building permit before you release the lots. It's just, right?
You just can't sell them.
Right, okay, I just want to.
Build anything you want to, well, not anything.
Well, no, but you, you actually.
Anything in the building is not going to let you build.
In your decision, typically, you would just allow me to do that, you know, make a, a specific finding that we can get our building permits before, um, you know, before we secure a release.
Right. If you want to stop building houses as we're constructing the roadway.
But no releases. I get that, okay.
But you, you just can't sell the lot then.
Uh, that's later in here, right?
Yeah, that's why I just figured.
Do we need to?
No, we're just, we're skipping ahead a little bit.
Yeah.
So, can we address that when we get to the page? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Um.
But we're, we're. But we're, we're talking about conveyance of the open space parcel, the draft deed prior to, and we've established that, does the board want to have anything in here about acceptance of, of the final deed and, and time of recordation of it?
Of each deed you're talking about?
Of the open space parcel.
Oh, the open-
The deed for that.
I will deliver, but I would rather, I will deliver, I cannot control your town, so I do not want to be subject to when your Board of Selectmen accept, and everybody recommends, so I, I will, I'll even deliver your signed deed, but I don't want to be held hostage by-
That's all we asked for, was delivery of a signed deed.
That's all, and I have no issue with that, recordation, I do.
Right, and, and I'm thinking more about later on, when you're done, and we have the board looking at a draft deed and say, when were we, did we decide we were going to do this, about taking the deed, giving it to the selectmen and everything else, so I'm just trying to think of, we've started that process-
Right.
How is it going to end? Is, is it just to be noted in the minutes of, of what the board decided, or are you ready just for it to remain open?
Well, we were going to submit the deed with a letter, right?
To the selectmen. Yes, that would be part of the process, we would receive the draft, the draft deed, at that point it would come to the board, the board would-
It might be a good idea to, to draft that letter as, as a draft, sooner rather than later.
Yeah, so that it's ready, and we can have discussion about it.
Then we'd have the continuity, and that would be basically the process.
Okay.
Because you, you don't want a final deed until the selectmen approve what we recommend.
Right.
That's the whole of it.
Right, I'm-
Is that right?
I, I agree with you, I'm just saying it a little bit differently.
I guess so.
No, but I think your point is very well taken, to have that process laid out.
Yeah, definitely, it's, it's not laid out in the book of our subdivisions about open space.
It typically is never laid out, I know, because it's really, you know why? Because it's within the purview of the selectmen, not really the planning board, that's why it gets kind of sticky, sometimes your gross chart, like your town charter, will have those provisions for town, for street acceptances, so you, if you look at your town charter, it could be in there, I, I did not look, I'll be honest, but I know we have it in various towns, they do have that.
How about a provision where you would deliver a signed deed, a signed deed?
Absolutely.
Meeting the, okay, you deliver the signed deed, meeting the conditions of, of the select board, to the, to the pleasure of the select board or whatever, and I'm just trying to think at what point you would deliver that deed, so that you would be done, just because I want you to be done, working in that area.
We're willing to submit it, you know, once we're through a pro, I mean, you said fifty percent through, I mean, no matter what, we have to submit it within a year, we really should, so you're going to get it by the end of the summer, next summer, no matter what.
Do a timeline, yeah, we could just put a date on it, too, you know?
Would that be okay for the board?
You could just say a hundred and eighty days from, from approval, or something like that, or from the issuance of the subdivision permit, the subdivision building permit.
We'll deliver the signed deed.
Right?
It's just, we will deliver a signed deed, and we'll be, we'll be willing to make modifications as may be directed, because that may happen.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at, in other words, you send the draft, the draft would go to KMP, KMP would make that cross out, add the semicolon, send it back, and how do we, how do we specify that that would be the one you'd sign without, you know, how do we do that, I mean?
I mean, all I can tell you is I'll deliver the signed deed, and then if there's changes, we'll make them, and give them to you, I mean, I, you know what I mean? We, so-
Are we blabbering this all the time?
Maybe we are, where is that, at fifty percent, at a hundred and eighty days, where is that?
A hundred and eighty would, from the day of your approval, would only bring us to February, so we may not even be done with a lot of the road, depending on when we can get started, so a year would be perfect for us, so if you issue your decision some September two thousand fifteen, we'll deliver the deed to you, and we won't, we won't be done.
One year?
Delivery of signed deed.
Within one year.
Within.
Well, she said ninety days it would take her, so why are you going that far?
No, because, that's, that's a draft.
Is that a draft for the ninety days?
It would take about ninety days for your process, once you look at the draft deed that I've submitted, it can take minimum of ninety days to get everybody to sign off.
Why would they sign a draft deed, they're not going to do that.
No, 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 you're not, okay, I, the, the requirement under your, under your, what you just said, is I have to give you a draft deed for that open space parcel before I even get a release for the first lot, before I can sell my first lot, so you have a draft deed, at that point it is up to this board then to move that process forward by drafting that letter and sending it to the selectmen, saying, this deed, you, you might make comments back to me at that point, I take it, you draft your deed to the selectmen, and within one year, right, you will get from me, no matter what, a signed deed, but I'll do it, I mean, no later than a year, you, you want to do it earlier, after that, you know, after I deliver the draft, fine with me, but my point is, I need to, Ms. Let's tell you, his point was, we need a cutoff date, we, you can't have us holding this parcel and paying taxes on it for four years.
Well, I'm trying to move it, I'm trying to move it, I, I would prefer no draft, I think that if we got a letter, say, out to the selectmen with our request by the next meeting-
It has to start as a draft.
It does?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Everything's a draft.
Because, yeah, because this is the basis of any negotiation, of any discussion, of any-
It's not a draft with us, Tilly, it has nothing to do with us, it's a draft for you to meet with your, you know, your, your town fathers, nothing to do with us, and I'm just willing to make the changes, do what you need, and accommodate you, that's all.
What do you have forwarding there, Howard, a delivery of a draft?
Delivery of signed deed for open space parcel within one year of issuance of subdivision permit.
Or prior to the release of the eleventh lot, that's good, that's a good place, you'll be in a good place, that'll work.
What do you estimate would be to finish this?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's your goal?
Give us some flexibility there.
My goal?
Yeah.
He's a developer, he wants to build it in three weeks.
Sell out in twelve months, are you kidding?
Right, what time?
That's the goal!
What time is it right now?
Yeah, really.
I'll talk to you when he has to.
I would, I would hope two years.
Reasonable.
That's pretty reasonable, yeah.
Anything else on page six?
Possible.
F says developer to grant to the town an easement to access the connection from the open space parcel, it should just be as shown on the plan, right? That's the only thing I'd add to that, just to clarify.
You still going over that one?
Yeah, I had a quick question, the next one is G, developer to provide an off-street parking area pedestrian path leading to the open space parcel for the benefit of the town and its residents, question that semicolon there, but, two spaces of the on-street parking area shall be land banked in case future demand requires additional spaces, educate me.
You set aside, or, or rather, it was requested, that I think there was, first generation, there's two spaces, and you wanted to make sure that if it became a very popular destination, which we hope it will-
Okay.
That there would be an allowance to expand the parking capacity.
Okay.
So, with, with this notch being made to the road layout-
Okay.
They had to adjust the adjoining property lines-
Okay.
So that road layout now is a notch-
Okay.
For four spaces, but they're only showing two being-
Only showing two.
So you're holding two with grass in reserve.
Okay.
So if any-
And that's called out on the plan?
I believe so.
It shows the big area, but now that would be, the town would do that at some point in the future, the town's expensive, it's town property.
Right, the town would have to-
This is a road layout.
Yep, it is in the road layout.
Gotcha, great, fantastic, that's all I had for six, where we are, seven's clean, eight's clean, page nine.
Before we leave page seven, and just from a higher elevation, the, the one thing that I think the board knows, when I write these type of documents, is that I like to cull the herd, so we say, as opposed to think about adding things back in, so I left in under three F, a release of liability for subdivision, and what that release of liability for subdivision was something that was written into other decisions for, for other, the purpose of snow removal, right?
Yeah.
But that was-
Right, that, yeah.
For roadways that were not going to be accepted or anticipated to be accepted by the town.
Yeah, that's, that's a strike.
So in this instance, it would be stricken.
We strike that, because, um, oh, yeah, that's a, okay.
What number is that one?
That was on page seven.
Yeah, that would be if, that would be if the town was going into plow, the town's not going into plow, snow, until we accept. Okay, good one, Howard, like that. I look on page nine, and I look at six A.
Oh, yeah.
And I see that you wrote, prior to any lots being released, it talks about the legal transference of parts left to the town, in, in light of that, is, is that where we, that's prior to any lots being released from covenant, and what did we come up with, Howard?
So, it's, it, as A is written now, I would say that, that would all be stricken, and instead it would state, dra, uh, draft deed issued to the planning board prior to release of first lot.
Okay, right, before any lots are released, the draft deed goes in, so that's where we plug it in?
Yep.
Great, we plug our little thing right in there, great, and we have B, I'm noticing that prior to the lots being released, I'm seeing a performance security, I don't know how other towns do it, historically, the way we've done it here, what we've always done is release lots without performance security, up to a certain point, because we really do have performance security, before you'll get anything, you're going to have covenants on every lot in the subdivision, you won't be able to sell any of the lots in the subdivision, because the town has the, has, has to lean on the covenant, and at a certain point, you'd come in and ask for one, two, three, maybe four lots to be released, so you could, after you got your binder and your roadway down, so that you could make a little money and pay for the pavement, and, i- is, is this what we're looking for, that be prior to the lot, we're looking for a full-blown performance security?
At a certain point, we will come forward, so that we can get a full release of all the lots, so we can sell, as they may happen, because what ends up happening a lot of times is we'll designate lots, and then there'll be another lot, and we have to come back, so it's better for us, once we get to a certain point, to be able to come in and get a wholesale release of all the covenants with a performance bond, but, as you stated, you know, it, it really would be better for us if we don't have to deliver that performance bond until we, you know, like, maybe after we sell four lots, because once the roadway's to a certain standard, and we have the pavement down, and there's clear access, then, you know, you'd still have eighteen lots of security, and the reason for that is just to, identical to what you just said, allow us to pay for a portion of the roadway we just built, because when we do the performance bond, we have to bond at the town rate-
Sure.
With a contingency, so it's so much, it's so grossed up.
What are the real numbers, Tommy, you've done a couple of developments, what do you need, about a third first? My goal here is to make sure that you don't turn belly up before you finish this thing, I don't want to have to pull a bond and finish it.
Well, that's, that's why I questioned this, if I may, is, I thought our subdivision makes, says the road has to be completed.
No, before, prior to release, the, the, the way it works is you have to be completed to binder-
So he can't do a third of the road, he's got to do all of it.
No, 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 he has to do all utilities-
Right, all of it.
All the road, everything, all infrastructure, everything, stormwater, the whole nine yards.
Everything is done, we're not doing, remember we talked about, we're not doing it in phases, every single part of that roadway, even the cul-de-sac, right?
The binder's got to be in for a certificate of occupancy anyways.
Absolutely, before we will set, before he can come to us and say, I'd like to take my first lot and actually sell it, and we release this first lot so that I can sell this lot-
Right.
That, that whole road has to be in, except for the top coat, with the exception of the top coat, and a couple of trees and little things like that.
Right. And the sidewalk won't be in, but the roadway and all infrastructural utilities will be in.
So what are you referring to, this third and third and third?
What I'm saying is third, the first third, I would think, the numbers, and I could be way off, but the numbers are the first third, release up to that point, come in, get what you, the releases that you need, up to that point where, where, what's a third of twenty-two?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight, so half a dozen house, half a dozen lots released at number seven, at number eight, then we say, whoa, now we're starting to lose our leverage and our hold, because we don't have two-thirds of this lots anymore, you're getting too many of them.
So we come in with the covenant.
Then you come in with performance.
Our bond, yep.
With your bond, with a tripartite, we always like tripartite, but-
But yeah, because, no, we're proposing a tripartite, we delivered a, a form, we are.
I don't think we've ever done that before, in what you're proposing.
No, that's how it was always done, the problem is that, yeah, the problem is it was done helter-skelter, and without any forethought, and a developer would come in, could you release a lot, or could you release three, could you release seven, okay, now all of a sudden, they're all released, and the town has one lot, and absolutely no security.
Right, when it's helter-skelter, you don't have the control.
Yeah, well, I, I like-
You, you would want to move it from that section, though.
I'm sorry?
You want to move it from, from that section, stating prior to any lots being released.
That's where I would go, I, I would say that that would go somewhere prior to the, in other words, make another section. Right, prior to release of the seventh lot, or something like that, a number that the board would be happy with, if you're not happy with the third, you can make it a smaller number, five, six, seven.
Like you do prior to any lots being released, the, the applicant will complete the road, to address Tilly's concerns, you know, complete the roadway, have it to a point at which the building expected to be blown to issue the certificates of occupancy, which means, you know, do all that, right, then you can have prior to the release of the sixth, seventh, eighth lot, whatever-
Whatever.
Then we, we come in with the tripartite, so then there's that trigger points, and you never have to worry about it.
Right, yeah, I, I really like the, the bulleted sections, not bulleted, but the-
I know what you mean.
Yeah, I like that, because it's, it's much easier when-
It's easier to read.
When someone's going through it, so sometimes it can get a little dense.
We do the road completion, then we come in at the, the seventh or eighth lot, okay, that makes sense to me, and then we have one that says prior to the eleventh lot, we have to deliver the deed, so this is when all this comes in, now in this section, okay.
Right, so prior to, just to make sure we agree, prior to, after lot seven, prior to release of lot eight?
Yep, prior to the release of lot eight.
Okay.
Sounds right, sounds about right.
So, from one to seven, now when are you going to release that?
When they come in and ask for them.
Right, once we know we're going to-
But we do that-
After the road.
After, we don't do it before the road's done, but what we do, there's a window here, before they come in and they want their second lot released, and we don't say, whoa, now you're going to do your performance bond.
Yeah. Yeah.
We say, go to the seventh lot.
Yeah.
But as soon as he comes in and he says, I have someone that wants to buy lot eight, nine, ten, and eleven, at that point, we say, well, sorry, performance bond, tripartite now.
Right.
We'll release all the lots to you, but you have to give us security. You have to give us the tripartite.
Yeah, and we'll go over that with the rest of the board, so that
Absolutely.
And when we do the tripartite, you, 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 how does the, how does the town do it? Do we, do we submit like our bids and our bonds to the town? Does Larry Graham create the bond? You know, for us to know how much you want?
Gives you, the inspection engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so it is, oh, whomever you choose. Okay, I did, sometimes DPW people do it, so I didn't know how you worked it here.
I think we'd want an inspection engineer to do that. Yeah, that, that's how we've always done it in the past.
Yeah.
He creates the bond, okay.
Creates a, and then we put a multiplier on it.
Yep.
Because
And then he tells you when we've done certain things, so we can come in and get more
Yeah, releases.
Yeah.
And then the releases come to the board. You request the releases.
Of the tripartite from you.
Partial releases.
Partial.
Well, no, it's called dispersment certificate. So we don't get confused. It's called dispersment certificate. So if you refer to them,
Write a letter.
So when you issue the tripartite, you give me the releases of all lots. And then, because the tripartite doesn't allow the bank to give me money, I come before you with this thing called a dispersment certificate? And then you sign saying, okay, whomever is your inspection engineer signs off on the work I've done and reduces the bond by that amount? And then you sign the dispersment, I give it to the bank and they allow me to draw money on my line. Because until that point, the only people who can draw are you.
Yep.
I can even submit a form. If you want, I'll give you a dispersment certificate, just to give you a form of it.
Because that's a little bit different language than we're in here, so just send on
Would you have, usually, I'll send you my dispersment certificate for it.
We tipped off the Form J.
Off of, yeah, Form J, my god, that's
Yeah. That's a partial release. That's not, that's not the appropriate talking. I, I, I can, I can provide you with the dispersment.
Really needs to be upgraded. That so needs to upgrade.
I can give it to Howard, I can give
Dates from the seventy
God, that Form J so needs an upgrade.
I can give Howard my, my form and you can, you can play with it.
I, I, well, I'd like to write it into this.
Yep, I'll, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
E, developer must submit a lot release Form K. And F, you're gonna like F, right?
Where am I?
The roadway must be, right?
That's right. I like that one.
All utilities and drainage must be installed. Right?
Yep. Beautiful.
That's prior to any lots being
Somebody knew what they were doing.
I had two other things.
Okay, that's good.
Sorry, I'm, I'm a little worried here, but you, you realize what we're doing here. We're, we're basically making a great template for a great decision. But Howard will probably use part of this in all their decisions at this point.
And you're constantly evolving and
Yeah, that's what it is.
Better, so.
Had an issue with page eleven. Uh, it's H on page eleven and, um,
Oh, sorry, on page ten, where it says Form J.
It's ten?
Yeah, that, that's gonna be changed to the dispersment.
Dispersment certificate, yep.
Gotcha. Right, final release of security. Yep, okay.
Alright, sorry.
No. Good catch. Fix it now. And, um, excuse me, H, um, this talks about, uh, changes that are made in the field. And the way it's written right now, it says, and/or town, town planner, and/or the site inspection engineer approving insubstantial, uh, changes to the above referenced plans. I like the wording that was in the Serenity Group.
Oh, yeah, with the site plan stuff?
Yeah, um, I, I, I almost wanna, you know, hybridize or just use that wording, because it, it gives it to Howard. Howard is the determinant.
Changes in approved site plan shall be submitted to the town planner for review by the planning board. If requested or required revisions are determined to be subst- um, substantial, the applicant must provide a revised site plan supporting documents to the planning board for approval. To substitute site plan with subdivision. Now, in keeping with the, uh, takeout as opposed to add-in, on, uh, page eleven underneath H, this is something that's in the template. Uh, there shall be no further subdivision of the lots as shown on the approved plan. The board never discussed anything about further subdivision of any of the lots. Off the top of my head, I believe that there can't be any further subdivision because of the size of the lots.
Yeah, but wasn't there, wasn't there two abutting property owners that came in and talked about it? Alan Olson and, uh, Tolman? Weren't they in it the early, way back when?
They, they wanted the board to consider granting easements across that open space parcel.
Oh, I thought they wanted the road to go right up to the, the future if they wanted to.
The, well, that, that's what they wanted, but the board didn't give it.
Well, isn't that
No, this is saying that if somebody owns lot ten, that in a future date, they could subdivide their lot ten and create an additional house lot.
Make a ten and a ten A.
Oh, really?
Which, we, yeah, this is pretty much standard in, in, in some, I don't know why.
Yeah.
I've seen these everywhere. I don't know where.
You can't have, well, is that gonna conflict with the two buildings on one lot?
No.
No, but, but also, I don't think
No, because
the lots be subdivided anyhow, according to the current zoning.
Yeah. Right, but the only issue with something like that is you, you restrict, like, say, I know it shouldn't happen, but it could happen. Um, there is the ability, like, for the town to change its zoning and it becomes, for example, half-acre zoning. You limit the people's rights to subdivide their property if they so choose. So it, it, i- i- it is an unreasonable restriction, because unless you, a- you, actually, it, it's not even an enforceable restriction, to be quite frank. Because if people have a right granted to them in the future, then they should be entitled to do it. It, it, I don't understand even the restriction. If I could understand the purpose of it, and it was in your rules and regulations, then that's a reasonable anticipation. And that's not considered something that is randomly imposed, but to just impose it, I, I, I don't, I don't, for what, what is the reason?
I've seen him on our other, other, uh, decisions that we've had in the past.
I have never seen this before.
I've seen a lot of it written, um, on plans, older plans.
And what is the reason for it?
Um, just because some of the older divisions of land had larger parcels that would have been subdividable.
But under, under the, under
I, I also think it was a matter of, of when the inclusionary housing bylaw came into effect, there was a lot of nine-lot subdivisions and the bylaw at that time was only considering subdivisions of ten or more. And so there's an effort trying to be made that, we're approving you for nine, so at a later time, you can't go back and start
Oh, okay.
creating additional lots.
Okay.
Circumventing.
To, to, to get around the bylaw requirement.
Right.
But, I don't think that applies in this case, so.
But there is
I, I think the, the, the only real value I see to having this in there, and I've seen it on other decisions in the past from class planning boards, is that, uh, at some point, if someone were to come in wanting to do that, this would get pulled. This subdivision permit would, this decision would get pulled. And they would have the mindset of the board that this is it for this parcel. Um, as far as changing it to half-acre zoning, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I, again, I don't, I'm just saying, like, you, you're, so a person comes in and buys it, um, and buys a piece of property in here. And a person across the street, in fact, a person in Lisa Lane buys it. The person in Lisa Lane has the right to subdivide their property. The people in this part of the subdivision don't. So it's, it's, it's a very random application without, without reference to a bylaw provision. It, it, it is, it is a very unusual provision. I, I, I don't doubt that it was put in in some other plans. I mean, people sometimes do things, um.
Well, you already have the, what is it, eight-year protection, uh, from the, the approval date of the subdivision. You already are protected in zoning for eight years, correct?
I'm not really sure what that, what that mean
That means that you, you, today's zoning
Yeah. I'm saying if zoning changes in a more favorable fashion, if zoning becomes half-acre, so that's, if it changed, the, the protection I would never, I would never elect. I would go for whatever would be the new zoning, because the more restrictive would have been the old zoning, so the grandfathering wouldn't work. The, it's simply because you try to cre- create equality among all landowners and this seems to create inequality. And again, if I understood it, if I thought there was a drive, I would, I would not have brought it up. I just, I didn't understand it and I never saw it in any other decisions and I didn't see it in the adjacent subdivisions, none of them.
A- and I, I think the middle ground could be, uh, just removal of the first sentence. Because this decision is based on the condition that no more twenty-two single-family homes will be constructed on the land. So I think that would prevent either someone that buys the land or the developer from, after this approval, going in and, and trying to create more additional lots than the board's approved, but wouldn't limit somebody in the future when this is under individual ownership of all the different lots from, from somebody.
Yeah, I don't, uh,
So did you create that or was that in our
No, that's, that's, that's historic.
It, it's, it's, it's historic from other decisions, so
I wonder
It, it kinda needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
And, and if we're really evolving the decision, then this is
Interesting.
discussion point.
Yeah, we should talk with Tim about that, too. Tim and, and Rob, see what they think. They might have a unique perspective on that.
What, what we're discussing here, though, are the terms and conditions of developing this property. Not what's gonna happen two hundred years from now and whether people put up swings and slides and a
Sure.
pool in the backyard. That's for some other people to, to decide. I, I, m- my reading of this is, it's the intention of the board that the developer's not gonna put in more than twenty-two lots.
Mm-hmm, right.
It, it, that's, that's my reading of the, the
Yep.
of this. It, it, it's not to restrict people in the future. It's for your, your project.
Right, see, it just says that there's going to be no further subdivision as shown in the approved plan, so it, it burdens all owners forever. The, the subdivision approval carries forever.
Well, let's see what, uh, Rob and, and Tim think about it. Next time out.
K, K and P might have some thoughts about this, too.
And the, uh, the only other thing I had was, and I don't know where this goes. If you recall Stone Row
Yeah.
and the problem where we had, um, it was supposed to be monumentation, monumentation couldn't go in because the utilities weren't in the right place. Um, just a blurb, and I, I have some wording here. Um, and again, I don't know where you'd plug this in, Howard. Good luck figuring it out. All utilities are to be installed as per the approved plan, which isn't too tough to take. Uh, the developer shall be held responsible for the correct installation with respect to location, as shown on the plan, regardless of the installer.
The, 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 you have municipal electric, right?
Ooh, the light, yes.
Yeah, they, they move those all the time.
Yeah, don't, don't let them.
But we don't have a choice.
Yeah, they, they're not gonna move it without coming back for, for, for us.
They, they design the plan.
They have to follow the plan.
Remember, I asked you guys that?
They're going to design the plan.
Okay.
And if it's gonna be different, gotta come back.
Did you submit it already?
No.
The light plan?
The light plan is submitted.
Okay, and you didn't have the, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've started that coordination.
Oh, yeah.
The light department is probably almost finished.
Comcast comes in and tries to put a poll. Make sure it's where it's shown.
Yeah.
That's all. And that's just a heads up for you. I'm, I'm not concerned about you guys. It's an easy one for you. You're gonna, you know where, you know where the street is, Tom. I know you do. Some, uh, and again, this is all about evolving this decision, so that it works pretty much as a template for the future.
It just, I always look for a little flexibility with regard to utilities, because I do know they shift, but I understand what you mean about conflict.
Yeah. Just makes it difficult.
No, I get it.
And, uh, that, that was it for me. And, um, thank you very much for your input. What, um, what else are we looking at here tonight?
Some M account releases.
Oh, good. Anything else?
No, thank you very much. I'll, I'll send Howard the stuff you need.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, um, next meeting, we'll just hammer out the one item of the inclusionary housing. Uh, the, the board members receive, um, the, the motion and, and the votes from the task force, as well as what the motion was from the trust.
Good.
And, uh, it'll all be hammered out. And that's really the last item of the decision.
Awesome. Wonderful, wonderful. So I will see you and I'll get that stuff at the spot. I'll do the revision date and all that.
Great.
And, um, we will wrap up.
So assuming, assuming we get that hammered out at the next meeting.
Oh, yep.
Right? Will the decision get signed? Can it get signed that night?
It'll be voted.
Voted that night.
Yeah, but I'll guarantee you, there's gonna be some changes that need to be made.
Inclusionary will probably add some changes.
How do you, how does, how do the board sign? Do you then sign only at meetings or do the board members sign outside meetings? How does it work?
If there's a, if there's a rush, uh, like if you're on a deadline, you guys are all done with Concom and your appeals for Concom and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Um, wow, you're looking for a rock and roll.
Kind of restricted from starting.
Right, you're looking for a rock and roll.
Yeah, because the decision issues twenty days.
Sure, appeal.
Yeah.
Um, what can happen is
We recommend you do this early.
Yeah.
This is part of it.
One thing that, that we have done is, uh, once the decision's drafted, uh, and we finally work it all out with a full board, uh, we'd have come up with the final wording. Once Howard knows the final wording we're looking for, what we could do is, Howard could take it, send us an email, say it's over at the police station, ready for your signatures. Soon as you get, what is it? Well, you'd really only need three. No, it's, it's not special for me. You'd really only need three signatures.
Right.
Soon as you get three signatures, when the third person signs, sends Howard a text or a phone call or something saying, I signed, there were two other signatures, and at that point, Howard could go pick it up and he'd have it in the office. And that could happen in days.
Down to the court.
Down, run it right down to the clerk. Yeah, that's true.
Bless.
Okay.
Bless, alright.
Well, perfect. We appreciate it very much.
Rock and roll a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and we're looking at three M account releases. And and we have paperwork for them, Howard, or?
Hold on just a moment.
Oh, I know.
Too good.
I know. Keeps you going at nine-thirty at night, though.
Motivates me to do it.
Yeah.
I think we were gonna get out of here.
That's the caffeine, that's the caffeine. You can't fall asleep if you need a job.
Well, I always say to you, didn't you get, uh, any changes from me?
Tilly, I've been so buried with emails.
Okay. Um,
I just wonder where the heck they are.
There is three, uh, M account releases. Two which you, you had released, uh, one you had released previously, but there is a typo. So I'm just asking that the board re-sign that, and that's the one for Superior Steel.
Can we have that one and we'll sign that? Cause I mean, we don't have to vote that, right?
No.
This is ministerial.
Yeah.
Great. And we got the, the number right? Oh, is that the one we didn't have the? What do you call it?
Um, we didn't have the interest It should've been a nine, but it was a zero or something like that. I mean, it's over the five-dollar threshold.
Yeah, I know. There you go. Um, while we're doing it, why don't we deal with the, um, the seventy-three East Main Street one?
Seventy-three East Main Street was, uh, an, uh, M account two-six-four-three-four. It was set up for Getty Station.
Yep.
For site plan approval. Uh, the applicant was East West Realty Trust. The, the site plan was approved and ownership has changed.
Yeah, it's TP now.
So who does, it, it actually, oh boy, thank you.
It gets released back to, um, Bowler Engineering.
The engineering company?
Yep, they're the ones that, um, provided the funds and built out the escrow agreement.
Okay. Get a little here and could I, um, possibly see the, thank you, thank you. Um, I'll accept the motion to, um, release the escrow funds for account M two-six-four-three-four in the amount of three thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
So moved by Tilly?
Yeah.
Seconded by, by Paul. Seconded by, by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. What the heck is today? Today is eighteen, thirteen, fourteen, right?
Were you involved with this? I never even heard of this one.
Oh, that was a long time ago, that one, right? And thank you, thank you very much. And I will accept the motion for the release of M account two six four five seven in the amount of three thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-eight cents to East West Realty Trust.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
So how's the backlog looking?
Oh my gosh, we must be, we must be really doing well with these. I mean.
Well, Wendy was really good with her investigator.
She rocked, didn't she?
This is some of her legacy. There, there's a few and you would, she was, had the, the mindset to be able to vain and find all the information. So there's.
So the new, the new assistant needs forensic accounting experience or something? How does that work out?
Detective.
Part detective sleuth, part accountant, part assistant?
I need two more on the cover again.
Ah, missed it.
But, but seriously, you must be making good, you and the ghost of Wendy must be really making good progress.
There's, the, the, the fruit's a little bit higher up on the tree now. We're finding the inflation and they're getting into, you'll, you'll notice that we've gotten away from law, that just the subdivisions with street acceptances. These are getting into special permits that, that we haven't been addressing. And so with the site plan and special permits, ones that have been approved and, or change of ownership and all those things, but there's still ones that we need to go out and make sure the, the people they are issued to are still occupying the site, still using the site. We need to make sure that they're fully conformed for the purposes of what the escrow accounts were set up. There's, there's probably about fourteen of those left and there's probably another ten active ones.
Really? Pretty good. We knocked it down from like three pages.
Yeah.
That was good. Wendy did a great job.
Maybe there's, there's, there's ones that date back to Bella Woods and things like that.
Yeah, real, real.
And the white whale is, there's one that says miscellaneous planning board. It's about fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. They took all the ones they couldn't figure out and they dumped them all into one.
Yeah.
And now we can't even use the money. We can't even use the money. There's an executive session possible here? Should we, before we go off on that or?
Okay.
You can't.
Yeah. It was held over from the last meeting, so I just wanna make sure it gets addressed. Camelot Realty Trust has filed a request for a final release of their bond.
Their tri-pate?
Their tri-pate. And, and what's happened in the past, there's been three previous partial releases and he's asking for the full remaining amount. And up until this point, all the release of funds have had to do with things such as the, the road and utilities and everything else. This one is asking for everything, all the money back. So it's, has to go through and make sure they've satisfied all the conditions of the special permit. I believe it, it, it was done. He, he's given me a Form J that's just recycled from the previous one, so we've started a whole new Form J. And I've started at the top. And so I've first started talking to Lou to make sure that if he's got any jurisdiction on anything that was done, please review it, all the water valves and things like that, that the city, the town of Georgetown may have been involved in. Was that all done properly? I've gone through and I've started doing work to make sure that all of their payments to what was then called the fund, which was for affordable housing, has been satisfied and I've found record of all but one. So it's taking a long time. He filed this back in June. It's taken a long time to go through a full file cabinet drawer of all this documentation for everything. And then it's just gonna keep moving on.
Short-handed as well.
Yeah, really, I mean.
Well, it, it's stalled a little bit since Wendy left, but, and then it has to go to conservation. His conservation needs to sign off and make sure everything is satisfied.
This is what due diligence is all about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cause, cause once this money's gone.
It's gone. May I make a suggestion? Does Dave Varga chime in on this at all?
Not yet.
Because I mean.
He signed off on other things with the previous releases, so he's gonna be addressed to make sure that his go.
Right. He's gonna have to walk in there and say that it is done according to the plan. And of course, as-built plans most likely would have to be submitted as well.
Provided and, and with the last partial release letter that he issued, there's a couple outstanding items.
Absolutely.
Trees.
And need to know that those are all done.
Yeah.
In addition to that, just because, only because Dave Varga came in to the, to, to the inspection of that special permit area, he came in after it had already begun. I would suggest that we write to the, what do you call that? The covenant? Who, the condominium association?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd suggest the board consider writing a letter to the condominium association and asking them if.
With their input, yeah.
If there's anything to their knowledge that should have been done that isn't. And I mean naturally, if something that should have been done according to the decision.
Yeah, they should be involved with it.
I, I think a simple letter out like that.
I, I actually think that they were involved a little bit with the last release. I saw something with the HOA that was.
Oh, the homeowners, okay. The homeowners association. Excellent, yeah. That, that would be.
condo association, COA or HOA, whatever it was.
Homeowners association, I don't know.
I heard it was surface that was in charge of it, the chairman there.
He is.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was involved in that.
Would there be any costs in doing this, this research? They would draw down the, the balance?
No, this is bond money, not, not an escrow account. Yeah, the escrow account was actually closed, I believe, a while ago, so.
How would we pay Dave Varga then?
Well, for technical, I'm, I'm sorry if that was the question. I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's any, any cost involved.
There must still be an M account.
Right, there is, yeah.
Yeah. And that's how we paid it, through the M account.
Now, that, that brings up another point. Dave Varga of BSC is partially retired. So.
Lucky bugger.
With, with, we haven't needed his services for a while since he came in and told I'm going to semi-retire. Now we're gonna be needing his services more and more, so I'm gonna be reaching out to BSC saying who's replaced.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think he had somebody from Boxford. Wasn't there an assistant or something?
I'm sure they'll tell us.
Yeah.
We're all.
Although it's right in town, he might just wanna do it. He'll have more time to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Possible.
You know?
Well, there are a number of engineering services out there.
Probably.
Do we have any kind of target date? For wrapping that up? Or not, not even a target date, just.
I don't want it to draw it out a long time.
No, no, clearly.
Giving everybody, I mean, there's ten, twelve line items to, to go through and each of those may take two or three weeks, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, fair enough.
Are there any other engineers from the BSC group that would be able to cover Georgetown? I mean, we've had good luck with BSC group.
Yeah. Let's all find out and find out who the replacement is and invite him to come in.
Yeah, absolutely. Senior, senior engineer and I know we have a contract with BSC.
Yeah.
Might be nice to find out who, not who Dave would mentor, but who would try to fill his shoes anyway.
Right.
From BSC and, or the board might wanna look elsewhere and find another engineer out there. I'm perfectly happy with BSC. I know that. I know that's primarily because I've been happy with Dave.
Right.
So maybe that's.
Well, they would have probably records and they would have materials and, you know, he, he might have enlisted somebody else in the organization to do some of the work. I think it makes sense for continuity's sake. What are you laughing about over there, Matilda?
Well, you know, I think when people retire, they don't realize, you know, that they miss being involved with something. And so I think that you probably, you know, ask them again. I think he might say, hey, it's right in town. Why can't I do it on my own rather than having a company?
Oh, rather than work through BSC?
Yeah.
Have him be just use it. Well, right now we have a contract with BSC, so that might be.
But he could at least close out projects that he's been involved with when he was full-time with BSC. If somebody new comes on board for the new.
And I wouldn't be surprised if the company didn't, you know, throw them a bone and just say, yeah, you take care of it yourself. Don't tell us about it.
I don't, I don't recall us ever renewing a contract, so I don't know.
Oh, you might have a point there. It might, it might just be.
It might not be anymore. I don't remember a date of it.
Stringing them along.
We never paid him.
Check it out. We need to go and roll call vote for the.
Do we, do we need an, an executive session or is that something that can wait until?
Well, I'd like to wait till the next.
The next meeting.
Yeah.
I'd like that myself. That's way better.
Because of the eighteenth had to be, a decision has to be in the report by the eighteenth.
I didn't bring the paper.
I, I don't even know what you're talking about.
There's a, there's a.
I don't even know what you're talking about. I don't even know what you're talking about.
If you can go to an executive session.
Not being an executive session.
Yeah, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay.
So.
I think we need executive session now.
Tilly makes a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation with the intent that we will not be returning into public session. And is there a second for that?
Yeah, I'd say.
No, roll call.
That will be not, yes, but it needs to be seconded for us. Now it'll be a roll call vote. Uh, Tilly?
Yes?
Yes.
Bob? Harry Lackett here? No, but motion carries. Motion carries two to one. Thank you, everyone. Good night and be well.